We broke any public discussion on any item in the minutes, please, you mentioned or idea.
He went through that stuff pretty fast.
We did. I think we did all the way done.
All that?
We did. We did a long stuff.
I got all this. That's just, most of that stuff I'm about to slide this camera.
We still have to do it.
Oh no.
And I'm, our, we'll have to pay Kyle extra, and I hate to say that, but I'll put every bit of that on the minutes.
Okay.
And the minutes that we went over that workshop, so. Kyle will be coming with me to repair, doing new shoes and a three-piece suit next time.
Pretty tasty gum, huh?
Yeah, it's pretty juicy.
But you can't do it until, what is that, October? Is that our mixing day? Yeah, you won't get it until October, so. I do need to send the plastic officer's, um, minutes to publish, but they're short this time.
I got a call downstairs from Wayne Bauer this way.
You were at Jersey?
It's fine.
Oh yeah, you were there outside.
I was there for once.
Sorry.
But, uh, I guess I got a letter from Chesapeake remark oil now about, uh, she has property of that way she didn't know about. That old rolly writes a roll to, my fucking lawyer, I said, oh yeah. I don't know where she lived right up there from, but, yeah, I don't know about it, and talked a lot, but it's set together very closely. Now, has your daughter graduated?
In December.
So she's moved back to Cherokee, yeah?
Yeah. She only has two classes the next semester.
Oh yeah.
One is a night class and one is online. She'll take two online classes this summer.
Oh no, Trey, is he graduating?
Nope, in December. We probably have a semester waiting for him, then we have a semester early.
She's pretty sure. So I need to go find some bells from the treehouse, all right?
Yep. They'll be there next November when we're actually, we'll have finals beginning in next month in our form, which you gotta go through the shore. And finals happening in the house, so I'll pay it, just so I don't have to try and go and put it in a lot.
Should we find a building here?
Yeah.
Here?
Yes, and a house, so she's...
I think, does she live, what comes up here?
After finals.
So, come off, that's not bad.
She, um, I think she's planning on doing like a big grant opening that next, the Saturday the fifth. She wants, I, she needs to get with you, so I figured it's to be close to them and hasn't.
I thought it mattered that much, but I said, they should have state track.
We'll make the motion.
We'll be at the table.
All in favor?
All right.
You know more than.
Again, if there's a cancel one, they're pulling out for me, I couldn't get them, I think I got them all.
Yeah.
I just stuck your whole pile back in the pile of those canceled ones.
Yeah, I tried too. Where's her, where's your building at?
Can you file? Text ones.
Cherokee. Yeah.
She still hasn't totally rolled out. We had a call in with a bank to buy the pool store, but he just said, don't hook it for us. And I don't think she needs to.
So it went up for auction.
So, he didn't accept it. Didn't get a high enough bid on it.
You're talking about real?
Not the big one, the city on the south.
I don't say the big one, you know.
The one.
That'd be a big shot.
Yeah, the one, right.
Couple to watch out for.
Not too far from town, then.
Right.
Does she have, did you say she had a location in Kilkenny?
We think, we think most likely it's gonna be text ones, and she's waiting on the bank to see if they, I go, I said, I, you know, if I knew they was gonna be here ten years, I'd say jump all over the pool store. It's nice in there, but...
Got a nice garage in the back.
Nice garage in the back. I think we could do that into living quarters, not too hard, potential and place for dogs, you know, nothing.
Even if you just either an extra place to store some merchandise?
Well, and Trey's going to school to be a trainer, so if he could do something with this thing back there.
That's gonna be the hardest thing, you know.
They're, they're open in the gym in Cherokee, aren't they?
Yeah, right next door, or two doors down from that.
That's his name?
Furnace.
Yeah, furnace.
So, most likely.
Cherokee responders.
Well, that's pretty good. I don't have two, it is if you want to move trees.
Pretty high for straps.
Twenty-two of them.
Oh, now that makes me think it's.
What a...
Yeah.
Cherokee responders, they'll ask you about the time. Cause I was like, okay, well, I saw that before you told me.
Yeah, they had, they needed special straps for their, um...
Their radios?
Radios and stuff. They got those new radios in and they couldn't find a strap, but he's been working forever trying to find a strapped out, so it's up here so they can hear it, and we found it on Amazon, but at that time we wasn't going through Amazon, and then I finally told him, hey, we went through Amazon, but you already found him. This guy had been working on looking forever trying to do it, so. But anyway, she wanted to do a, have you do a, we'll pay for an advertisement to open, is that what you would get? I'll tell her that that's the car, she said it's car show and state.
State track.
State track, but we're not hosting, that'll be in, you know.
That'll be the city, that'll take people out, I mean, a few.
That would give her more of a... Time, more time. She might go ahead and open that day, but have a grand opening the next weekend or something.
And we'll get with Sean, I'm doing ribbon cutting.
Okay.
And then when we do the ribbon cutting, I just wear.
Well, I didn't know whether they would do a ribbon cutting without her being a member of the...
Chamber.
Over there at Alba, they wouldn't do it without her being a member of the chamber, and their chamber thing is kind of pricey, I mean.
Arcedal, you actually have, I mean, we encourage you to give donation, but...
I think theirs over there was like a hundred fifty dollars. Her starting out, she couldn't pop off a hundred fifty dollars, and she needs, she was only gonna be there that short time anyway, so.
We, I mean, we do ribbon cuttings, they'll have to join, but she must join.
She's pretty excited.
So that's taking her business, is it pretty good?
Business is doing good.
She'd buy that and resell it when we're there?
We hope so.
And text one, I mean, will she open this, she remodel it, so.
Yeah, it's, I think carpet's kind of outdated and closed, I mean, that's something, you can make it pretty later. We don't have to do anything to get them on.
They're not coming with carpet color, the clothes, right?
Well, it's several different colors, several different rooms.
I know, I know.
It's just a girl, I mean.
She could probably take, I remember if there was a couple rooms, she could probably turn it into a chain.
Yes, yes. Um, Valerie's gonna keep one room, but she's got a bunch of stuff still up there, and so Nicole said that was fine.
Nicole should just try and sell it for her, she's probably.
That's what I, I want them to talk about, and Nicole won't dabble in flowers to begin with, but I'm probably should go a little in flowers and stuff.
We need her flowers out so bad.
I mean, she wasn't, right now she sure couldn't deliver, and that's gonna hinder you a lot if you can't deliver, but, you know.
Well, if you had to agree, you could pay out.
No, but those good, she could, you know, she could.
You could find a hospital.
Find, yeah.
Just someone that's only came here to call them up when you need delivery.
I'd call mom, but mom's not gonna do it. Mom said no already, no.
She's got a brother, huh? Plan to, plan to be a good flower delivery.
Here's your flower.
Be a pretty good flower delivery girl.
Yeah, listen to Paul.
I saw the picture.
Last week, just, I called her, she called me, you know, when they was, um, he was doing good, she called me an hour and a half later, she was, "Mom", and I went, "I mean, no, he's gonna hurt."
Stuff's wearing them, man.
Called me next morning, she says, "Come get him, I'm not a killing." I went, "No, no, you can't do that. Mom, he's driving me crazy."
You married him, not she.
So I said, I said, "Honey, when you said I do, that meant in sickness and in health?"
We're gonna have more. Kids coming in the future, and you're gonna be nine months pregnant.
I did kind of warn my men about that, I said to them, hers is nine months, yours is only a couple days.
Let's see what I look about.
I must be going on a trip somewhere, seeing that across.
You don't have to sign with us.
We don't get the home or something.
That's, yeah, but it's.
Yep.
It's Jake's.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any.
Let's see all work about this one.
Oh, look at that.
She found a pretty nice place to live.
I think it's Eighth Street and Grand, you know, where Mr. Leslie lived, on, on that side, right across the street's that Steckel House. They've really remodeled the inside, but she had one of, um, Cynthia's.
I wasn't paying any attention, I've been looking.
She had one of Cynthia's, she asked her to hold it till today. She asked her if she'd hold it today, we told her we'd put somebody down, and she texts her the next day and sent it to her. After she told her, "Yeah, that'll be fine." I said, "It was probably a blessing of this guy's." Start surfing. This guy was a little very, I don't know, he runs the ranger inn at Alba. But he's...
Probably, probably into back.
I don't know who owns the house, somebody, a, a person that used to live here still owns it, he just kind of oversees the renting.
I bet I can make this.
So you're like, walk while I'm the pros.
He, he was. I think it's an elderly woman, I don't, I, I went in to ask the assessors, and I got to harass them about other things that I forgot to do, but I wanted to. Thought I wasn't there. So I forgot to ask who actually.
It's Jay Higgin, he did his thing. He even sent this one back.
But Diane Farrell was nice, and she was kind of holding hers, she called me Friday, and I went, we just found one, it was a hundred dollars plus, then I think they're pretty equivalent houses. Diane was gonna let us, let her go ahead and have her dogs, and just go to bed and hones it down. It was, I don't know what it was gonna be.
Don't tell him, someday I should wonder. The Ohio, that blacktop west island, eight foot right away, that firetop clear over there. Well, she's in pretty, well, it was windy.
Some of my neighbors saw this, they're not sure if to look.
No, I haven't seen it yet, there's, there's a sign out there, oh, two guys.
Those are all themselves. I don't know, even those people, I met them both once, but not very good neighbors.
They're woodspeople, yeah. She was woods, what we last.
No, 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 not woodspeople, they're cop cells.
Oh, I know, they're sure, I know, Irish is named it.
Yeah, they, I, they sold it to someone else, yeah, they've been in it for years now.
So these people are selling it now? No, I've been by those.
And I say, did a, rented a home with Irish, and then I rented another, so, there's a for sale sign there by owner.
Oh, for sale by owner. You should go buy that, be your neighbor.
I could be my own neighbor.
I could be your neighbor.
Oh no, it's sold already, sorry, you spoke up too late.
There's special bullseye targets on the side of your house.
That's it.
We could get some, like, army guns.
Yeah, you'd have to, you'd have to do the old launch over, cause there's a house in between, the trees in between, it's a mile away.
I'm a good shot.
You're a good shot.
How much are a horse?
Big guy, I have two of those, sitting on a.
Some heat, heat censorings. That's kinda lame as well. Um, it's better, I don't know, not all of it, but started.
Wonder. For what?
The house.
Where's it at? That's a good choice. Do they own the house they're in, or they were just renting in?
That's the John Raffens.
Most of Killeen, right down that road. Was down there the other day, but never seen very that, or. It don't take very long to build you up, it's all the interior work, right? She has to trade in her car to get someone to handle her?
She keeps telling me I'm buying her a car, and she's gonna get something better, which I would like to have her car, but I don't want her car payment.
So we got a, I got a beaver trapper in this.
I saw that, gee.
We have that thing, we need to, I mean, to mention, we used to do a thing with the forsything that we paid so much, but we haven't paid it for a long time, so I didn't know if they did that.
Well, the problem we had over there getting the forsy guy out, or the wildlife guy out of Pond Creek was, the landowners there wouldn't let him own the property, do it. And this is the guy that runs the fish after, he knows him pretty well, he's licensed, he got in there and he got him trapped and got him out.
Okay.
I just, I knew we hadn't paid it for several years, I didn't know if that was something that we didn't start paying again or.
I think we hadn't paid it for seven years, and then it was paid last year.
I don't know, maybe I'm getting the year. I don't know, yeah, time flies when you're having fun, I know we didn't pay for it a couple years, and then I know we started paying for it again, but.
You need to tell the city about that, they got some, three hundred dollars, that's not bad.
No, that was dirt cheap, I mean, really.
I think it's going to.
And baths, you did, did the baths.
We, we took them beaver damn down on a Thursday, and Monday they were all built back in.
Oh yeah, were they?
And water crossing the road there, and real.
Upper way, the oasis?
Yeah, other side of the oasis, down that road.
Yeah, I've been through there, like, I got beavers here, guys.
Yep, we were aware of it a long time ago, we kept working with that federal trapper, and he probably said, "Those landowners won't let me own the property."
Stick it down.
I told Chris, and he said, "I can get on there."
Dynamite is, or, uh, or, uh, well, what can you buy at that woods?
Tannerite.
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 Kind of it. I've got, I've got a bucket of that stuff, he'll blow up, I think so.
Yeah, sure, take care of the situation.
Clean the beaver damn out at the same time.
Might take a bridge. Ain't sure it will.
Some of the guys said, "We'll go in and start shooting them," and I said, "Nah, I don't believe we oughta do that, might not luck to get, county employees have cute beaver on private property." And that worked.
If they do it on their own time.
Yeah, but you'd think that wouldn't reflect back.
Somebody's watching the wrong.
Uh, yeah.
Oh yeah, it reflects back, yeah. Okay, Stuart, make a good showing. I'll get him, see, like, control the beavers. He's trapping for you.
Chris, uh...
That's what I, Chris, that's LA area.
Patrick, Chris Patrick.
He's pretty.
Man, that guy's a good guy to work with and work around, boy.
We said, say that about me.
I don't care.
Don't they?
Thank you, my ears are pretty taken.
Camera's running.
I'm gonna go down to the fair, because of that pool store, they have the little one that's, I've got the traps, and I guess I have enough humans down on the traps, the traps aren't working, I'm just gonna go get that, I bought the poison already. Debbie from the club, here's what I could borrow, I suppose, you know, when you borrow something, something always happens, I don't think it's, it's like a hundred bucks.
Does she still live down on County Island? Or, correction, mine, Debbie?
Yes, 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 yes.
That one, that's the first house they put in, or is it, the original house?
Oh, I don't know.
Karen Gary?
I thought it was, but.
Maybe I'm.
She's had two sided in the bedroom.
That's what it is, okay.
I think it's an original one, yeah, they've done a bunch of work on it, she put a porch on it, and.
Yeah. I wonder when they moved out, she said, "It's bigger we have to have," she said, and I'm like, okay.
I think they were, it's keep changing that one.
The one that lived in Carmen, it was pretty, pretty good size. Try to, her, pretty good sized house.
Yeah, Curry lives on that new house there, I think he kind of helps her.
Oh, okay. Noah.
Do some stuff since Gary's gone.
Floyd's, Floyd's totally here, he has the poison, and wait, and then go for a look, shows up, he finds the hole and puts poison in there.
Sorry, you know, I'm sorry.
That's what I'm saying. Oh.
Stick that sand red.
Oh, how close you get the paint, that thing paid off.
Of course, I know.
I know.
Yeah, that makes me sick, I'm not gonna go.
I hope so.
Dan's gonna throw a party, and it's, you know.
I hope somebody wants to buy it.
We're gonna have a party on it, it's gonna sink.
What's that dread?
I didn't say that, I can't.
Oh yeah, I heard you say that. That dread, yes.
I'll tell you what, if you just get that insurance good, tell me not to steal that, and.
I love you guys.
We'll go show it over the bank, and.
You'll quit, you'll quit grabbing about the, um, the road crossings and everything, huh?
I don't, I don't know, I, I don't know how we're gonna get picked out, but I got an insurance, make it disappear, that tannerite'll do it.
That would be a tannerite project.
I've never done it, but I've seen it on Facebook, where people love tannerite.
Oh, another partial pay on that, and it's just a note, we gotta mark it as a partial pay when it goes, when we put it on the batch pay.
Back to the fire station, yeah.
No, is that the Brontons, or is that Gold trees, that's Gold trees, isn't it?
No, like, rig or, yeah, Gold tree, you're right.
Yeah, he got, yeah, he got the bid on Gold trees also.
Yeah, he's down the way.
Yeah.
That's a good problem to have, we're out growing our, our, uh, buildings. First John, he's dragging his dad to the day, that's funny. Why'd you put ten foot doors on that?
Here's another Cherokee prophecy.
He always slips one or two of those.
That don't drive by Cherokee prophecy, come, dude, everybody else does, don't they? I turn copies of the same one every time.
We need to have an internal investigation into that.
That's okay, we can have an external investigation of you guys.
Don't say that. Don't say that.
Pretty close, it's already. And it, it doesn't have to be the truth, I don't. It costs a lot of money, you know, clients, no.
The way I've been through it today, I've, I've.
You feel better.
Had it all. Hey, you got a old rip done, man.
Cold, huh?
Yes.
Well, that's nice.
My Toby's got plenty to catch up, so.
Nicole turns twenty-one tomorrow, my baby's.
Out there.
I know.
I didn't even know Valerie was setting the, she was staying, ever stayed with grandma.
Yeah, grandma's, grandma's.
Aren't your kids supposed to grow up and move somewhere real cool, so when you can visit his snout? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Then they come back. You'll have two in Cherokee and one in La Cita.
I know, not very entertaining spots, so.
Not really picking the right spots, I mean, even when he was up in Wyoming.
No, I can't go see in Wyoming, and those roads are just, I got two sick ones, you know. Went to Yellowstone, and I have never been so miserable in all my life.
Really?
Once I got there, it was fine.
Under Jasmine, must fall off of you.
Yes, yes, I did. They didn't get it from me, cause I still throw up.
I'm surprised she didn't throw up when we were going to, thinking the road to Weatherford, well, that's still windy, and. What road to Weatherford? Going through like, passing like, you can't turn, you know, you can't in that way. Well, no, it's not that bad.
True.
Who it?
Can't wait so long.
They might, I remember, but we hit a ride about the sun was going down, so you can't actually see the road, so. So I landed, I said, "You keep an eye on the white line, I'll keep, white on the yellow line, as long as we're in between those."
She was probably ignoring you too, so she wasn't paying attention to the road neither.
Probably like, trying, trying to force herself to sleep.
I used to have to. I used to have to drive, I mean, all of us, and we all would be out, Roger was perfectly happy, he was like, why? That or leave like at two o'clock in the morning, or everything, so, sleeping and.
Dad would always go.
And you guys just had to sign.
We're gonna leave at nine thirty, and it'd be ten thirty always, so you just started backing it up an hour before you really needed to leave. You got four kids to get packed and loaded and.
Drogged in my.
You're gonna do that. You couldn't set one of us next to the other one, because then.
It would touch one other.
It was usually, it was usually none of us could sit next to Trina.
See that, nobody wanted to sit next to Trina.
That'll kill my girl.
I slacked on my job yesterday, we're getting their drinks for lunch, and she's come up, put her hand on her chair, she's, "I need a drink." Okay, sorry, sorry. That's my only job, let's see if they'll drink.
We were, we were nate with them on Saturday night, and Zaden wanted nachos, but kind of weird fucking smell, so, I think he smelled the charred native on us, and then Zaden.
Then no way.
No way he's eaten, but sister was nice enough to share a chicken strip with them.
Well, that was nice.
Watch out my room for the next bad go, come.
Well, had Dreamer, Kendra's dog, and Kendra was talking to Roy and holding her chicken necket over here. Pulled her chicken necket out of her hand, and she really, I don't know, she thought mom was doing her something, she never screamed or did anything until she turned around and seen it was Dreamer, they're kind of quiet. Then she starts.
See what they.
Yeah, I think it's natural.
It was?
I think she woke up from a nap. You want to stay a little wild, a little high up.
She was wild yesterday.
Sarah.
It's, it's a little loud up there.
Jessica made it, it's, yeah, it's like the free. Made out of fleece blankets, and the electricity, her hair was just wild. That hair, did it make you wild? Wild.
I was on a level floor.
Your hair's wild, and you were wild.
They can start to slowly get back to. I have a lot of women, right? After the hospital staying, stuff, he just was reserved.
Exactly, for a long time.
Fifty-one percent of the population now. Huh? Fifty-one percent of the population. Right, right.
Can't beat that people.
What?
Utility, now they're ten, twenty-five bucks.
I was, I got some gas, I'm gonna try to get something.
All radio's all working now, since we're on that, whatever.
I think they're happy, I think they'll be working well, knowing what we did.
If you get out of lane, well, over that part of the county, we're good and good. That's where the holes are. Tom got a couple of, a pretty cop fingered in him.
Yeah, and AEC is, um, peeling that every day to make sure that they're not on the generator, except on weekends, yeah.
No, they stick now, it's just a takeoff prize, or just gonna get. Make a four wheeler and a mower, dig prize. When is it?
Friday.
That's Friday?
Yep.
I have to look at, I do not go.
That is all, but now, now age, I don't, I'm not going, I'm like.
Is he not, oh, he's.
Jessica.
She works there, right?
Yeah. I'm not going, I'm like.
It's still in the free field.
As I said, you'll get the little, um, last year, I was the.
We're getting.
Getty top.
Cheer, stay there, Chapp is the one of the best.
I like the Chapp, yeah.
Any more than that.
I like the, the jumper cable pack thing that we got, that was one thing.
Where the jumper cables?
Well, they do, they'll work if you're in a pinch.
Right.
He just got it around, but she got me another one, and I put one in Nicole's, and I kept one.
She made it up.
And she might got Landon's, cause Landon probably already got this.
No, we had, we used to, I've got at least three, cause I had one. Mine, the farm, had one in my parents' house.
Those jumper packs?
This, yeah, no, this was a, um.
I know, this was like, it's like jumper cables, the best part, I had like a plug in, little compressor.
Yeah, those are, really nice, and they're not that expensive, and they, you charge battery off of them.
See, we can't charge the battery, this is, like, it's air up, you air up tire. I need my water, what?
I really like.
That's Rick Walsh.
And they say you have a P O that's, not within dates, it's, you need to be checking those, because it tends to live it going through four people.
Yeah. Well.
Which, the ones that we have a letter attached, they can still.
The lines up on that was.
But we've already explained ourselves.
That was the best money I ever spent.
My, my dad had one of those.
That was one.
If you're in here, like, so if your battery just died while you're flying.
Yeah, you just reach out there, you can.
Where's the door that doesn't shut?
The bug hit you and.
That's lunch.
That's a problem.
Rubbing on bugs, that'd be birds.
Just wear goggles.
I've got a newspaper already going, I need to show you. I took a newspaper guy out for a ride on one back. Years ago in Anthony, that didn't have any cockpit, we was sitting out the other, he was taking pictures, really big art. Pretty cool.
It was raining this morning, Pete wouldn't go out.
No.
My dog's not setting up.
I was trying to make it.
I just stayed outside with her.
For a long time, reading them right.
She'll stand on the back of the porch, just by the door.
If it's remotely raining, if it's thunder, he is not gonna, he will like relieve.
She gets scared, but she knocks.
You remember when you.
He tore out my screen, he crawled to my house. When it was thundering.
Did he?
That's expensive, he did it to six screens.
Yeah.
No more.
I blew over the ball.
He stays in the garage if there's a prediction of storms.
Get on there. And Marina. Those guys threw a ball up at me, and it just was almost like, I almost could catch it, and I went around, I started to come back to see if they could throw them with the ball, and I thought, if they missed me and hit six foot behind me, it might hit that prop, and I'm coming down, so I didn't make the circle.
You sat in that tent again.
I almost caught their ball the first time.
You ever tend to carry water balloons up with you when you go?
Flower bags.
Drop a water.
Sure, flower?
Yeah, yeah.
Not mad?
One day he hit the grill, it, somebody blowing their yard.
That's a guy. Right.
We'll do this sometime, I know where some people live.
I don't know if you ever, ever got caught on the ride that when I was campaigning for his house.
I threw it at your stuff.
You just didn't make it.
Is it out of time yet?
Not still working.
I'm surprised I left.
Next time we'll get a snake, surprise, surprise the snake, put a bull snake in it.
Always tell your friend, yeah, I'm gonna wire the doorbell up to shock you. You lose that.
Ship to County Barn, jet. His water bottles. His water bottles, Divine Water. To District One, so ship to County Barn, jet.
We got a pallet of water bottles at District One.
That's where they, instead they shipped them to.
They, they didn't ship them to jet.
The Divine Water's address.
Oh, sorry.
Ship to is below it. Address is above it, the ship to is the Byron.
Where'd he say Byron?
What?
Oh, okay, sorry.
The, the jet.
We knew that.
Their address up there, the ship to is County Barn, Byron.
I move, we accept it, give him an old orange.
Aye, sir.
On favor.
Keep forgetting jet goes that far, but, aye.
Blanket.
These are my shoes.
All two, all twos.
I have two to the sheriff, that's all, so I'm just gonna, I'll jump.
No. I guess jet will do the, the address and stuff that way.
Yeah, yeah.
There's two coming.
Right. Chips butter, that's what I'm saying to you.
Well.
That's that and ours, how it's supposed to be.
It's all in the shop, it's all worth it.
I know.
Thank you, got them all. Unless everyone's stuck up.
I think it's just that.
I move, we accept the blanket.
Second.
Aye. Roadcar should bring me it.
This is, this is mid shot. I make most.
You have signed it.
You have signed it, guys.
I have to sign it.
I'll second.
On favor.
Aye.
Aye.
You wanna use my pen?
No, I get it.
Sure that laser didn't go high up in the head there, or?
Be careful there, son, payback your time.
It was, I know.
I move, we accept the roadcar.
What are you doing?
Oh, yeah, 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 you leave me alone, too. Much the office report.
There's three there.
Aye.
No.
She's like.
Don't break my step back, I'll send it for you.
She's like me asking.
Baby.
Mine's thirty, so. She wants mother to be the baby, yeah, daddy, now quit doing this, quit doing that. Girl, I have to stop, I am bringing this world, I have to take you out of this world, man.
I discovered they're too mean to try to count. Exactly, just lock them out.
You can't do that, cause they brought a grandma, and you'd get in trouble.
That's no joke, that's pretty sad that you know that.
We got, we got one grandma left, so. Oh, yeah, they get, they get fiddle, they grab them, it's a frac, yellow wood. She'd get in trouble. More than once, she has been.
It's your public ground, you're.
Did you ever tell her, I learned it from you, mom?
No, no, you don't say that.
She'd get, she'd get the wind spoon out.
Cause the towel that has the flower and the taxes, you're gonna chew them.
Yeah. That one's got that little nails in it, but. It's tacky, too.
Move, we accept the.
Aye, sir.
On favor.
Aye.
Aye. Appropriation for election.
These, this is kind of what we talked about in the officer meeting, we, um, missed Kelly's, her reimbursement, coming back for her, um, election board members and stuff, so, there are three here that we missed last week, so, again, I told them we would come through, and somebody else would check off those miscellaneous receipts as they come through, we might catch those, but Kelly was needing them in there. I had the exit board go ahead and sign them, instead of having to have a special meeting for them to come back, I notated it on there that I had them, the exit sign them before you guys signed them. I didn't wanna have to, it was gonna cost me a hundred and fifty bucks to have them come back and have a special meeting, so, and I, and they were fine, saying.
What are you saying, that's important, one good, a good, at least we won't sign it wrong, it's fine.
Yeah, I'm taking my place, but, yeah. I don't make the run for it right now, we're all gonna.
Make a motion approved.
Second it. On your way, right? Have some discussion on that.
About you?
Division order to enter. For D twenty-four twelve, one H, H B for eleven twenty-four twelve, and N state's.
Those two up here?
Yeah.
Do you know where, uh, once Mary the Wayne Bowers, now Donna, whatever her name was, went that way? Or whatever. It's really nice to like getting back up and going to bausch downstairs, I figured the one upstairs is full of people.
I did too, I headed up like four steps, and I'm like, oh, they're business.
They stopped, and they live in Alhena now, but, aye, they found out they have some land up that way, their dad had. They got left to them, whatever, didn't know they had, just some oil mineral rights, and, yeah. Wish I had that. Well, it sounds like you just come up here and figure it out, now you gotta familiarize yourself.
Copy, three hundred and fifty. Identical.
Yeah, sign it too.
Just gotta sign it, yeah.
Sign both, sign our.
Yeah.
Yeah, totally.
Yeah. Yeah, I got it up here, what, up here for funeral, or what's going on around here? Just you have to sign it, right, nobody else, right?
Yeah, give one place at us all.
Oh, wow, we're gonna get a lot of money off this thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're still.
Really get reenter.
I make the motion approved.
Second, all favor.
Aye.
Probably pop the easement, for District Two for northeast, two twenty-five, four, five trees.
God, this looks like a good bit of farmer. Right?
I like when it counts, um.
County burns trees? Make a motion approved.
Second, all favor.
Aye. At least they're gonna sign it.
Service contract between Alpha County and Voish Product Service LLC for February eighteen or nineteen.
This is what she had came to you guys in the meeting and was discussing, I don't know if they discussed it in the nine-one-one meeting, about having the multi-language, I mean, if they, they have someone that doesn't speak English, they can call, they'll come into the call, but there's just, there's an agreement in it, so. I mean, I have two copies, one to send back to them and one to, um, for us to keep.
Most of them don't speak English, any of us have wound up.
She said she's only had a caller, that one's, but, and, and they charge it by the call, I think she said it was like sixty-five cents, something like that, we put a blanket on for.
Very inexpensive.
Yeah.
Balance due is.
Put a blanket on for fifty dollars, and we'll just pay it as we go.
So, the balance due is two thousand two hundred and ninety-seven bucks.
That's, that's the actual agreement to begin with in each call.
If they don't speak English, they're not accepting the, uh, state for it, I'm concerned.
And if you don't use it, they'll charge you.
Right, right, once, they pass the initial startup of them, that will be every year.
I know, I don't think, same way on that.
So, you took, took the county quote or your quote?
Whatever you, whatever you wanna put there, I already.
That's Mr. Hagg's, Hagg's quote, that's not the, the rest of the two commissioners.
Just got one other sign there?
Yes, you gotta sign it, sure.
Just one of us. Damn, sorry.
Did it have to put that in the article?
Don't, don't, don't put that, my name on that, no.
Yeah.
So, this, it's gonna be a split vote on the service. I know some pretty good Mexicans down there, some don't like, yeah, I don't like, yeah, but.
They're the best people I've ever met.
On the other hand, if they had gone through and got their citizenship.
If, if their citizenship, working pay, everything else, that's fine, for the.
Such a correct.
Kids are gonna, if they're gonna live off of welfare and everything else, they, yeah.
Some of my work went down in Texas, couldn't speak English, so I started chasing them with a, one of those little skid steers, and then they talked, they.
That's right.
I move, we accept the service contract.
Okay, yeah, we, that'd be second.
Thanks for the dolphin, for fifty-one, the fifty-four, for the.
We had taken these off of District Two, and this was an error on ours, and we had not taken them off of yours.
Right.
We called the auditor, she said, just to make it transparent, and we did not have these forms, the forms were, they were not having us use these forms yet, so she said, just do it on this form, just put it through, and then take them off, and, and I said, and I think you had it on yours, and, um, District Two had it on theirs, so we took it. So we took it off of District Two and didn't take it off of yours. And this is not something that we have to wait on since it's just transferring it from a individual district to District Four. She said, we don't have to wait on that for the election, for the filing period. So we'll put those on District Four and...
Do you wanna get the right spelling for this? That's not the right spelling.
I didn't write it. Who did?
Yeah, I don't.
Actually, really.
Etnire is what it is.
How you spell it?
Uh... Do you have a copy of Nancy, of that, the Chitchutter or?
Is it really?
It's a...
Is it a John Doe?
No, it's a...
E N T Y R E?
No.
Oh, marketing.
Or is it the him? Is this a brand name? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yes. That's spelled wrong.
Yeah, it's not right.
E N T Y R E, I think, but, by the way, let's, 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 let us look. Etnire, I don't know. I used to run blocks, I don't understand. The others, yeah.
Man, you're not, you're close, but you're not right and I can't...
The others I have, yeah, I don't like them.
How do you spell the exact correct wording on the Chitchutter?
What the name of it?
The name of it. Yes. I can't think of it.
Etnire.
E T Y R E?
Got an N in there somewhere. It's weird.
Yeah, I oughta know it. I could see it on most, but I can't.
I can see it too, though, the exact spelling.
I can't call it or spell it.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I just took it off of what she had on there. I didn't fill it.
Can we find it on spell check? Kirby Smith, self.
E T H R Y R E.
That's not right.
Yeah.
Enough.
They totally said that's not right.
It's got an E M, man.
E T H Y R E. Where's the only Chitchutter? We got the county in there to number.
Where should get it off of?
Yeah. That's what we'll go by.
I never gonna look at it, that's not right.
All right, bye. It's E T H R Y E, or Y R E.
Why, I got, I got her U, her Y as a U, then when I checked her spelling, so that was my error.
I don't think it's right yet.
What's the difference? It's got a serial number on it than an inventory. If you miss one word, some letter on it, am I not correct? I know the serial number.
Yeah, they'll go by, more by the inventory number and the serial number.
I'd still look at, look it up. No, that's, that's not wrong. I must bet money it's not right.
Move it, step. All favor.
Aye.
Are you the only one that needs to serve it?
Both of them.
Um, Jane will need to sign on both places because you're chairman for, so you'll be the receiving and the, unless one of you guys wants to sign as the receiving for District Four since it's coming out of his.
Well, you'll give your time to receive in District Four.
Yeah.
Mayor, if either one, it don't make any difference. I'll be there.
Yeah, that way it's just segregation and do, we don't have to come back over.
I think it's E N T Y R E. Get to look it up.
I've ordered parts for where you have.
Kirby Smith.
Trying, actually, getting anything to come up.
Kirby Smith, self.
We got parts out of Richland.
We've had it a long time. We used to have it. They're in the SC.
Did you do that on both of them?
Yeah. Alphab County Multi Jurisdiction Hazard Mitigation Plan update and require document.
Here's a list of the ones, here's another couple of that. These are just documents that have to be signed to go along with our application to FEMA for our hazard mitigation update. This first one is the maintenance agreement. Want you to make a copy of all of them first so we have originals, and they have originals? I was just gonna have you make copies of their sign, but I have to have the original.
You don't keep the originals.
They don't need original?
They don't.
And then this one here is just a letter, basically what it says is it talks about the NOI and how much it'll end up being for that twenty-five percent. And on here it says, which is eight, is eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars is our twenty-five local match. However, down here, those forms are going to also be used within kind, our third-party contributions for personnel time effort. And pretty confident that all that added together with our call fees and stuff will reduce that eight thousand seven hundred and fifty, if not take it away altogether. Because that's the, that's the plan with all the towns that have to meet and everything like that. So I, I put that in there too. So hopefully this won't have any added cost besides being paid and then reimbursed.
That sounds good.
We don't have that budgeted in, so we'll have to take that out of something else because we don't have that budgeted in with notice stuff. So the years that we're gonna have to redo this, we need to up that, we got a mountain. We did it five years ago. It was a lot more then because it was an initial. But that's why we used to have fifty-five hundred budgeted in for notice, but we haven't. This is, uh, part that has to go with the application, they call it a financial document. It, it just reinstates, reinstates that amount that's on that letter of the funds, how much the total is to update it, how much twenty-five is, and the difference of that. And then it has, you can read through it, just basic information, new application. I has my information down here listed too, which congressional district, just basic information on that. There's some extra pages in there because only the first two have to be completed. But there's instructions, I looked it all in there if you wanna put it in. They're blank pieces of paper, you know, so it just says one of five, so I put every, all the page on there. But two pages are instructions and one page is information you don't have to... We're gonna have those documents listed out on the agenda next time. Well, I may find what that, uh, Miss Vicki told me. Yeah, we have required documents here, we should have listed them each and every.
That's why I put on the agenda and related documents.
That's what I'm saying, but we need these listed next time. And then we're supposed to be transparent and so the John Doe public knows what we're signing them and maybe it will be spelled out in the minutes, but that's a little... Yeah, she told me to because we were still trying to figure out which ones needed to be on there and...
I already want to list all the towns in the school district, so we got that, you got that, yeah?
Yeah. It's listed a lot in the application. Well, no, it's just listed a lot over there.
Maybe one place on there.
Those are just the instructions, the last two pages are instructions, that last page, I think, no. That's just, like I said, I, it has one of five on there, so I didn't wanna not include that and wonder what page three and four consisted of.
I don't think they're saying the correct, but, uh, with the fire department.
So this one's just the lobbying disclosure of no lobbying. And all the other things that they're...
Project cost, no.
Suspension and other responsibility matters. We got free workplace requirements.
It's a total object. It's the last time, but they just throw it over now, we're going back to notice, it's notice of...
We didn't know the last.
Huh?
We didn't know the last time.
We did.
And then they went wherever they went in the middle of that. And then now we're back. Because major county had to use S W O D A. Because notice wasn't up in...
I was in start with S W O D A.
Yeah, I'm gonna say, I'm sorry.
Yeah, back to notice. But then notice is that. And this one is the insurance, and if there's nineteen on here, basically saying that it'll follow state statutes and the laws and all the acts that relate to this update.
May right here.
Order the technique of the fire.
We might spread the rain down.
Well, it's raining. As long as we get it our way.
As long as we get it, then we'll try.
Alphabale burn, somewhere out there supposed to be raining. Should be raining right here or something. Well, quite quick.
And that's what it said. And then it gets here and misses us altogether.
Probably worse.
Yeah, that, that's right.
All right.
I'm gonna do a check for mitigation.
Second.
So, I'm sorry, you, Jane?
Jane, me.
All favor.
Aye.
Up for same business. We are gonna put the burn ban on Toby for next week.
It's not on here.
On the agenda.
Okay, go ahead. I don't know, no, anyhow.
Well, just leave it on there and then if we decide not to do anything, we should do action there.
No action is or whatever, but...
Right.
We've had five fires, we had to go on since last Monday. They got out of control and we'd had burn ban on, they wouldn't have been burning.
That is true, they're still gonna burn one time or the other.
Yeah, but the conditions have got to be better than thirty, forty mile an hour winds like North and Gett and, and...
Uh, what's one worth of jet?
Two miles north.
That one's never been set in the first place.
Oh, no, you're right. That's absolutely...
And that was one of your fire departments, District One?
Actually, it was, I found out.
Right.
And I'm, I'm in the process of taking care of it. We may have two, uh, disband that fire department over there.
Ah, you don't go on a disband or not?
Well, it's an option.
Right. I, yeah, we need, they need, uh, some, uh, spankings.
Number, number, number one, that's the truth. They said it. Number two,
Let them call in.
They shouldn't have dispatched out Ness Katanga back to the fire when Jet's two miles from the fire.
Why didn't Ness Katanga leave the fire?
They were IC'd and babysat that and then they disappeared.
And they disappeared.
No.
But...
That's Ness Katanga, it's all Ness Katanga's fault.
It, basically, you're right.
And they, don't worry about, don't say anything about the jet for not getting called out, it's, yeah. I got a phone call from a, the young man from Dulton, said, where's the graders? I said, what graders? Like, then it happened to be my son's, uh, guy, it was Brandon Severn, he go over fire, fire department. My son called dad, said, I'm bringing graders. And, uh, we got out there and the guy said, uh, no, the, and they, the guy's told me now, I have no for sure. So be careful of this call. That Barry with the soft white, the refuge said, don't dig anything with the grader. Well, uh, if you're not gonna do that, we'll just leave that.
Sure.
But if the fires were to win east, they'd work out in houses.
Yep.
Now, are we in the business of taking money to set fires?
No.
Does Burlington do it? Byron do it?
Oh, no, we, you, years and years ago, when we first organized a department up there, if somebody's gonna have a controlled burner, they'd come by and get one of them old Jeeps and take it, or we would try to monitor. We quit that because they took advantage of it.
Because I was...
Every time somebody wanted to burn, you had to have a volunteer firefighter out there. Their time donated to do it. So we don't do it, Burlington doesn't do it. I don't know, and I haven't got a chance to talk to Ness Katanga, I've been putting all this together.
I'm just giving you that crap, yeah, because I, yeah, I, well, we're putting, I called Shayna, we'd love to talk to Shayna. I'm putting a lot together because they were very wrong.
Sure they were. They, that's, number one is...
And I was told that guy talked to Jet and they said they wouldn't do it, then calling Ness Katanga and said they would. Uh, got a little, it's still a little buddy system here, something going on.
Well, and, and two, when Cherokee rolled in.
That cuss Cherokee up, put a fire out.
The landowner told him, don't put the fire out. Well, when you're called to go on the fire, you put the fire out regardless of what they tell you.
Now, Stan got phone calls for graders, I don't know who from or whatever, and he called me and I said, we already got some on the way.
Troy was, Troy was right when telling him, we gotta put the fire out.
Right.
You called.
But they didn't, they didn't backburn the north side at all?
No, they threw the match in and let it go instead of backburning the fire. If you'd had a fire department, if our fire department was in there, we would, and we wouldn't have let the fire to start with. But if you've got a backburn, which we've done it hundreds of times.
Right.
You go there and let it backburn up to stop the fire.
Okay, the seed tree. The seeded trees there, so you know they're gonna blow up and they did.
Yep, sure they do.
The refuge guy, they want us to move any dirt, so I didn't tell him, yeah, it was, well, luckily it was going this way, because there was houses out.
That's kinda unusual because we've been on refuge over the years over here. I remember one time years ago saying, you can't take, we're leaving then, it's your fire.
Yeah.
Wait a minute, well, they went and got their own dozer and helped us out because you can't, you can't drive fire trucks out there because all your arms are getting stuck all the time.
My deal is now, if you're gonna go out and get paid to set the fire, you use Jet's fire trucks or, you know, if you're, what do you want? But Ness Katanga is all insured by the county, right?
They would end up processing all their trucks switched over to the county.
Yeah, so they can insure them.
That means the county's liable, because they're also...
That's right.
We have the insurance.
That's right.
So we would have burnt down three or four of them houses, we wouldn't, the county would have to pay for them. I know. Now, I've argued with some firefighters, the federal, but then you, you can't, yeah.
Can I bring up something else about this fire and the insurance?
Go ahead.
I just learned this morning, we had an accident during the fire Friday night. I came in this morning to see what I could do. Our fire trucks have liability insurance that covers them if we have an accident. But it goes back to the driver of the fire truck and his personal insurance if they're volunteer firefighter.
Your mail show, though. Really? We haven't had, we haven't had that problem.
I don't, I'm not aware.
If, if the damage isn't to the actual fire truck and it's just some other...
The other vehicle?
But if the county truck hit a personal truck, that's what our li, what's, what our insurance covers.
Well, he told me it would.
It wasn't.
Liability.
So I was, got calling Rob Sims to see if any of our little fire departments have any kind of policies. So it's gonna go back to that local fire department.
Now, let's go through that again.
Well, he told me that...
He had a wreck, hit somebody?
No, a guy parked behind the fire truck, bringing a firefighter to the fire.
And he backed into it.
And he backed into it.
There's no damage to the truck, so our insurance won't pay anything.
The fire truck.
The guy driving the fire truck, he, he is, not, unless he's a county employee. If he's a, what do they call?
Volunteer.
Volunteer fire department, it's his insurance that's got to be turned in. Unless that Alene Insurance Fire Department has, so we need to look into that.
They're all told that they have to have their own insurance, that we are...
Fire department.
The fire department itself is supposed to have for all their guys.
That's what I'm trying to find out, because...
And they do, because I know Alene, they have to give me their, their members' numbers and they have to have their social security numbers and their addresses, and we send that in once a year. So I'm pretty sure they...
Do you know if there was damages on the farmer's?
I don't know how bad it's connecting the damage, it's not a farmer problem.
It was pretty bad.
It's a farmer's truck.
I just saw pictures of it. And it was really a bad deal because the fire department just got there, the guy was coming down the road, he picked up a firefighter, he took him to the fire truck, he stopped, he couldn't see anything in the smoke, fire truck backed up. Thankfully, nobody was between the fire truck and the pickup. That was, but who's it, you know?
So was it on the highway?
It was on the highway.
Had me right at first, yeah, because that was the one. First off, you don't back up in smoke. Second off, if the guy hauls a fire, you don't drive up close to the smoke, you gotta have a little common sense.
No, there was...
And then the real great read, you... No, there was, and the rules reg re, if you're in a fire truck backing up and you've got unvisible conditions, your partner or your other firefighter on there goes behind you and directs you back, that's the rule of the firefighter. So somebody must not have been with him or didn't know that.
I think the guy that was, that he was taken up there by many of his helpers.
With his helpers.
Hadn't got there yet, it was just a cluster of dard, you know?
Maybe the guy shouldn't have parked behind you.
Absolutely, that's correct, I mean, you don't.
I would've thought about just being pulled aside, laying out.
I've had to, I've had to run law enforcement away.
That's why I've been.
Because it's getting dark, getting dark, you don't like.
It was just so slow.
What highway was in us? What road?
But I've had to tell law enforcement, hey, get the hell out of the road, pardon me.
Right, get to, get to, yes.
Because you can't, you can't be here, you're blocking us from our routine to get to the tankers and all.
And I think they were, they were stopping traffic already.
But those guys are trained and take things classes, that farmer's probably never enlightened on anything. He was just trying to be a Samaritan to help out and do what was right, and he got caught and it was an accident, we just need to find out who's liable and figure out what we're gonna do.
I, I thought, well, I built insurance.
I just, I just told him at the site.
I'm pretty sure that's right.
With the highway patrol, I just said, no, I don't know what we can do, we'll try and do what's right, and both guys got away without picking. And then I came this morning to see what we can do that is right.
You talked to Dusty, right?
We did talk.
You talked to Dusty, Dusty wants to go?
Did you talk to Dusty down at that? He'll check it out.
Well, no, he's the one that come in the.
He's the one who told you that? I sure didn't think that.
I thought it was the officer.
I didn't, we weren't dumb, nothing against you, we better don't check that.
Okay, I'm gonna bro it up, cause I just wanna, something done right with that.
And our fire hazard Wednesday, Thursday, Friday and Saturday attended pretty high.
Yeah, idiot.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
We're getting high to hold our breath.
Well, I'm sorry.
I'm just letting you guys know, I'm not, I'm just letting you guys be aware.
I know.
Cause you're probably gonna do the same thing as you did last week.
Saturday, Sunday, Monday, now they got all in the forecast.
Okay, so you had firefights.
Hopefully everybody's burned and they got.
One shouldn't have started, okay, that one, Valene jumped the road, it was called in.
It was trees that were burned from two days ago that flared back up, and Ali, you know, there was a controlled burn that happened two days prior to that, and it started to fester and it, with the wind and how strong they were.
Where are those trees at?
I, I don't know the actual.
I drove by that place in the daylight, I didn't see no pile of trees.
I don't know what property it was, but.
There was trees in the ditch where, okay, it probably had caught on fire.
It was just in the nine-one-one page, and then I talked to Rob Sims, he enlightened and told, there was this weathering tree.
I know, I know the guy who set the fire, and I would look, cause I know he's smarter than that.
What was the flare up from the previous?
Trees welled up or something, some stand up.
That's the same thing happened with Sam Stein's.
See Sam Stein, I didn't know about, but.
Up in Cowal, they had that fire, they got it put out three, four, five days later in green dye.
That's two of what you're talking about.
I got my houses.
That was a big fire too.
That was a big.
They got it down, though.
Just like the pressure fires, the Oklahoma.
We've been able to many of them in the last ten days.
We have a special at noon, if I get out of here and post it on Wednesday, can have it before noon on Wednesday.
Anytime you see this on your, on your report.
I know.
Anytime you see that, that's twenty to thirty to forty, whenever they put the winds, wind on.
I know that all the fire chiefs will su- would support that wholeheartedly.
Are you just putting the burn ban back on the agenda next?
No, 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 we can't do it.
We can't do it today.
No.
Unless you have a special, then you can.
Yeah, I could go.
Well, you're on the clarification, so it's on the agenda next week.
Yes.
Kelly's still standing.
Well, you know, Stan, I'm sorry, we can't prevent stupidity.
Oh, I know, I know.
Ignorance.
I'm just being stupid.
Don't hate me, there's, there was a, oh, shit.
Old Dryer South Cherokee was one.
Yeah, they burned down Hayville right here, and they have sixty Hayvilles right north of it, two days later, I had to work up here with a grater, Ginder, right? No one Ginder, who was it?
Uh, I don't know who, that, that old Combs place.
Oh, he's a kid, a kid.
I don't know who's got it.
You know, we just, we can't.
It's where James Harrington used to live years ago. Right across the bridge down that main road and then back east.
Yeah, and Bernie's Hayvale, Bernie's Hayvale, that is, you know, I'm sorry.
So are y'all gonna do a special meeting or not?
I'm not gonna be here Wednesday.
Well, you said two, didn't you?
They put a special meeting to Wednesday.
You want noon on Wednesday?
Oh, that.
You're gobby.
Yeah, I don't go to the doctor till Thursday, I think, yeah.
One o'clock or so.
Noon, all right, with you?
Put the burn ban on, that's fine, I don't care. When they cuss me out, I'm gonna say, you talk those two.
It's fine with me, I won't care. I'll tell you, if you would come give me a fire truck.
I'll get on, I took a grater with a jet, saw what those people did.
Y'all all.
I went over to Alene, look what over there, you know, that was.
Y'all all actively were involved in some type of out of control, controlled burn.
Burn ban only, you wanted to go.
Burn ban only, yeah.
Yeah, mine was put on for six months, and if you can't do it, then might as well.
Well, the thing we need to do is leave it on.
Just leave it on the agenda.
Leave it on the agenda.
No action, and that way we got covered until we get some kind of a surge of rain.
Cause everything's starting to green up now.
I pray we only have a month left.
I'm over your turn, yeah.
I do too, I do, I, I take it, let's go.
All right.